Hello, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's May the 18th, and this will be a special meeting from the Board of Supervisors on the COVID-19. This will be possible action and discussion, an update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19 updates, and taking any necessary action based upon those updates. Could I get the Clerk of the Board to do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Angus?
Yeah.
Supervisor Johnson?
Right.
Supervisor Gould? Supervisor Gould? And we have Supervisor Watson, Chairman Bishop, and—
Ron Gould.
There he is.
Has joined the conference.
Supervisor Gould?
Present.
And I believe we have County Manager Hendricks on the phone. County Manager Hendricks? Nope, but we do have a quorum, so.
Okay, okay, welcome everybody this morning, or this afternoon. Denise Burley is at the podium, ready to give us our update for the day.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I just have a few items to provide some updates on, and certainly I will make myself available for questions thereafter. I wanted to provide an update on the testing event in Lake Havasu City, which is probably not going to be much of an update. We did contact Sonora Quest this morning, and they said they would not be able to provide us with the numbers until likely tomorrow morning. So at that point, we will make sure that that information gets to the Board and out to the media through Roger, and we'll try to get that information out as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
I did speak with Mr. Lotoski regarding the parks and whether or not county parks should open, so I did check in with some of the other city managers to learn what they had, what they had done, and all of the city parks in Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, and Kingman have been opened for full use. And as I stand, understand it, Mr. Lotoski has said that those parks here in the county have also been opened and available for use.
Okay, thank you. Good news.
We have sort of a dilemma that's come up, and that is for special event permits. As you remember, back in March, the Board agreed and adopted a position that there could be no special event permits issued for 60 days. And I believe the expiration date for that is on May 26th. And we have started to receive temporary food permits through the Environmental Health Department. And these would be for activities, of course, that would not necessarily require, for example, a Development Services special event permit. This would be an event, of course, but they're looking to serve food, wouldn't necessarily need to go to DS for a permit, but we would certainly have a role in the food piece of it. So we are looking for some direction. Of course, we will not issue a permit based on the 20, date of the 26th and the suspension, or temporary suspension of permits, but would like some clarification on whether or not you feel that may change prior to the 26th.
Okay, so we'll open that up for discussion. Are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Watson?
Ms. Burley, do you have any concerns in issuing those permits for food distribution at different events? Do you have any major concerns?
You know, I don't think so. I do think there are already things going on in the community, and we want to play our role in the food part to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and that people feel comfortable coming to us to get those permits.
And you're not asking for any additional protocols for handling food?
We have not necessarily. We do have some of the guidance from the Restaurant Association, and all of the restaurants have, as I understand it, have also received that or have that available to them. And I think in that case, they certainly understand what steps are required of them.
So for those organizations that may not have that information from the restaurant industry, you'll be providing that information?
We can certainly do that, especially when people come in with a application for a temporary food permit, we can provide that for them.
Great. With that, make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Has joined the conference. I'll second.
And we have a second. So do you have the motion, Jenny?
Food permits, correct.
For food permits, yes.
So we're going to open up the food permits as of today?
Okay.
Right, right, I just wanted to make sure that we were opening that up.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Angus.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, it is approved.
Okay, wonderful, we'll start working with that organization then.
Thank you.
We did, I actually haven't had a chance to look through the, the actual daily report, but we do have the number of recovered cases. You had asked for that, and I know the public is very interested in that. So we do have a list, a number available, and that's 73 cases have recovered. And those are among cases for whom we've completed the investigation and minus subtracting out the deaths. So we do have that number, we plan on posting that on our webpage by the end of today. And we apologize for the delay, but we did want to make sure that we got the definition rate and that we could calculate that number using our available information and get that accurate. Our plan is moving forward that we update that information every Monday, as it doesn't change dramatically every day, but will change over the course of a week. So we plan to actually update that every day, or every Monday.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on that.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
I don't know that we've had it yet, but in other places have. If somebody recovers and then they get it again, or it recurs, are we counting them?
I believe they would be counted as a new case, Supervisor Johnson, but I would need to clarify that, okay?
All right, thank you, that's all.
Okay.
I have a question for—
Supervisor Watson.
Ms. Burley. Ms. Burley, reviewing the latest statistics on the number of COVID cases and the number of deaths, the community of the Kingman area is three times that of the closest number in Lake Havasu City. With the understanding that the Kingman community is largely a retirement community, and we have a number of rest homes in the area, and also our location to I-40 and Highway 93, great deal of tourist activity, are there any other influences that you can think of that would make our numbers in the Kingman community more than any other community in Mojave County?
Well, in this particular case, I would say that there are two particular things that are influencing the numbers in Kingman. The first, well, actually three. So one is that there was always more testing going on here in Kingman. Secondly, that we have had cases within long-term care facilities here, and those spread very quickly. And so many of those numbers, as you can see from our, our long-term care facility counts, are reflective of that and in, in the Kingman area. And the third is that we are, we encompass such a big area in part because to section out, for example, smaller communities makes that much more easily identifiable, makes the patient information much more identifiable. So we can't necessarily break them apart quite the way we might want to. And there are certain populations for which we are not, that information is suppressed, that we're unable through our dashboard to provide that information. The tribal communities, for example, have not provided permission, if you will, to post their exact case counts on our webpage, to break it out that way. So what we've done, and we've got permission from the Wallapai Tribe to do, is to post some of their press releases on our webpage, and that hopefully will also keep people up to date on what's going on on tribal lands, at least with the Wallapai Nation.
Thank you. And I understand the complexity of trying to report that, because we have the Golden Valley in our numbers in the Kingman area, we have Valley Vista, the entire Kingman community, and the other 60% of Mojave County probably is counted in that. So thank you very much, I just wanted to make sure that we got that information out to the folks that are viewing our meeting today. Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome. I also wanted to provide an update on the ZIP code data. I did send an email out to all of you regarding that. And due to the way ADHS calculates and/or reports that data, they have a very different system available to them that requires GIS coding to report ZIP code data. So if we would like our information to match ADHS, we would actually have to manually enter in that data to make it match. And I, I recommend that we do that. Again, it sort of ties back to the testing numbers, they're getting this information, and rather than duplicating efforts of just using their information as that reliable source. And, and we could, that way the website and their dashboard will, will match numbers.
Okay, are there any comments from the Board? I have one question.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead. Or Gould? I, I'm sorry, if you don't identify yourselves, you sound the same. Yes. Whoever's speaking.
I have a question for, I have a question for Denise. Denise, are we going to be provided the case numbers of the recovered patients?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, you may not have heard that earlier. We do have the number of recovered cases, and we do plan to have that up on our website. We've actually had it available to us behind the scenes, and we were just waiting for this number so that we could bring it forward. So that number is currently 73.
What I mean, the, 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 the numbers that were assigned to each patient, the identifying number, not the total number of cases?
So I guess I'm not certain I understand the question, Supervisor Gould. You're asking for the number as it would relate to our dashboard?
Every case has a number assigned to it. Case number one, case number two, case number 162. Are we going to be provided the case numbers of the patients that have recovered?
Oh, I see. You know, I need to check into how we would do that. I mean, that would be a lot of work, I understand. And so I'd need to check and see if, if that would even be possible. I realize we probably have the data, but I'm just looking at the work that would be required. Right now, we're just trying to pull reports out of the current system, so it wouldn't be impossible, but trying to make that match numbers would be difficult, because those numbers, like case one, two, and three, are unique just to our reporting to the Board and to the community, but not the same number that you might find, for example, in Medsys, which is the database that we use to extract information out of. So those actually have a case number that's very different than the 1, 2, 3, all the way up to 249.
So that is, the numbers that they were assigned were only for reference to the Board of Supervisors and not used anyplace else?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Denise, I have a question. Does ADHS also report the ZIP code 86402? And the reason I'm asking is I believe that's typically only used for post office boxes.
I will check on that, I am not sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because if that's the fact, then 86402 will probably always remain zero.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, if I have questions, is she done with her update?
I have one more section, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Fine with me.
Go ahead, Supervisor Johnson.
No, that's fine with me.
Okay, okay. So the other challenge that we've had is probable deaths. As you know, our federal and state partners, so federal agencies and ADHS particularly, have updated their guidance for identifying COVID-19 deaths, and this has actually increased our caseload by two. So you will see a discrepancy right now in our death counts of two, and that is simply because we only count confirmed cases in our count, and ADHS now is counting probable cases. So they've gone back, for example, it's when a declaring physician marks a box on the death certificate that indicates the death was probably COVID-19 related, and these medical professionals are really completing the document utilizing their medical history, their symptoms, medical records to guide their decision. And so they have that option of making it, you know, identifying it as a probable case. And so again, if we would like our numbers, death numbers to match ADHS, we will need to begin to include some of these probable deaths in our count. And we can absolutely do that. I've drafted up a statement that can be placed into the next press release. And then we can also share some of the data that we would normally share with the public on those particular cases.
Okay, thank you.
And that is all I have for an update.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The state today had more serology tests listed than they did PCR tests. Is my understanding that the serology tests are just antibody tests? Do we count those serology tests that come back positive into our confirmed case count? And if no, then why are they being included in our total test count?
They do not get included into our case count at this point in time, I'll say. I, I didn't hear the second part of your question, Supervisor Johnson. Will it get included into our testing numbers?
Yes.
Okay. It will be counted in the serology section of the test. So unless they actually do a separate COVID-19 test, that would count in our testing numbers, the serology portion of the testing goes in a different section under serology or antibody testing.
Okay, so it wouldn't give us a difference?
Not at this point, correct.
Also, I'm hearing our hospitals are low on test kit, and are backed to only test For the last little few days, we're not noticing very many tests being performed at the hospitals. Though I know that since the Governor has allowed elective surgery, our hospitals are testing their staff to make sure they're okay when they're performing surgeries, they're testing the patients that are coming in. So I'm thinking that maybe we're not getting the test. I thought the state was going to address it.
The state was addressing it just through the testing blitz events, and I think they're looking at more of a long-term solution to increase testing, but at this point, that those plans are, are not really public, and actually, they're not even not public. I don't know that they have future plans for testing blitz events, so much as they're trying to work with providers and ensure that they have, and hospitals to ensure that they actually have test kits to test. At this point, there are, there continue to be shortages of test kits, and I'm not sure what the actual issue is, if it's testing media, or if it's something else this time around, but I can certainly follow up with the hospitals to, to understand better what their capacity is at the moment.
And I guess what their priority would be, obviously, might be for the people that are kind of spending money. The Governor mentioned during his last press conference that he would like to see both residents and staff of long-term care facilities tested. Do you know if this is going to happen in Mojave County?
I do, yes, thank you for bringing that up. The Arizona Department of Health Services has contracted with a company to test staff and patients of long-term, term care facilities in our county. And this will occur starting actually this week. I don't believe they did any starting last week. They, they started their activities on Friday. But they are going to be testing, I believe, seven, and I'm sorry, I don't have the names of those agencies in my notes here, but they will be providing testing in those agencies. And then we will get information about the testing results, both for the patients and for the staff. Just as an aside to that, because they're anticipating that there will be some positive cases, not just in Mojave County, but throughout the state, as they perform these, these testing events with these long-term care facilities, they are planning to enhance and ship additional personal protective equipment to these particular centers. And they're also looking at how to staff those agencies and those businesses as they learn that, that staff are now infected, potentially infected as a result of this testing event, and they need to make sure that they backfill that staffing need so the facility can stay open and continue to provide services.
Okay, is, can the Board make it our policy to change the age rank now that we've got over 200 cases? To me, I think it would be a lot better if we had the 0 to 18, 18 to 30, start doing it by 10. That's something the Board can directly be done.
Mr. Espin?
I don't know the answer to that. I think better would be to follow the practice that the state has been doing, and that's what we've been consistently been doing throughout this whole thing, is what, what is the State Department of Health been doing, and that's what we've been following. If the State Department of Health is doing that, I think at this point, at 200, we probably would be able to, but I'm a little bit hesitant to suggest that. I have been working, I have not been working directly on this. We've had another attorney in our office that's been more involved with this, so I'd, I'd actually want to talk with her first. But if the State Department of Health is doing that, we've been trying to be consistent with what they've been directing us to do, and so I would suggest we follow stock, we follow in line with what the state has been doing.
But you're not sure if the Board can protect that?
Well, the Board can decide how, once to release its information. I mean, the Board will make that decision on how they want it to be done. We've been following what the Board has directed, directed, the Board, the Board has directed the Department how to do these things, so the Board will make that final call. So yes, the answer to that is the Board can make that decision. It's just whether you, whether it'd be a good choice on your part to do that, but if you wish to do that, you could.
Well, then I'll take a wild shot, Matt, here and make a move in the release. Cases by 10-year age group except for 8 to 30, and then over 65.
Supervisor Johnson?
Second.
Could you read those age groups off to me as you would like them, and, so I can get that down?
0 to 18, 18 to 30, 30 to 40, 40 to 50, 50 to 60, and, and, well, 50 to 65, and then 65 and up.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
Denise, didn't we change the designations from 65 plus before?
We did change the 65 plus, we, but I don't believe we have changed that on our webpage, and we changed it in reporting for the deaths.
Well, I, if we're going to do that, then I think that we should do it by decades for 65 to 75, 75 to 85, 85 to 95, 95 to 105.
I'll accept that as an amendment.
If I can ask for some clarification, Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Espin?
I'm Supervisor Johnson, I'm just curious to know why, why do you go from decades and then 50 to 55, and then 55 to 65? So I, I don't understand that part.
We're going 50 to 65. I just thought that people would want, usually go over 65, but if Supervisor Angus wants to change her amendment, make it 50 to 60, 60 to 70, that's fine, thank you.
So just again for clarification, just so I have it right, so we make sure that we get our, our cutoffs correct. What I actually wrote down, so please correct me if you'd like it differently, I have 0 to 18, and then I have 19 to 30, so we break that age group up. Then I have 31 to 40, 41 to 50, 50 to 64, 65 to 75, and then it would be 76 to 84.
Whatever it works to.
Are we good? 85, and can we say 85 and up? 85 plus?
85 to 110, sure.
Would you want to change that Supervisor Angus to the decade just to make it easier?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Would you want to change the, make it decades so it's 50 to 60, 60 to 70, 70, 80?
I think that's easier, actually.
Yes, I would, I would accept that.
So just, what do I have for the, what do I have for the last piece now? So do we want to just restate the motion?
So it would be, but it would be like 50 to 60, 61 to 70, 71, right?
Yes.
71 to 80, et cetera?
And 81 to 90, 91 to 100, 100 plus, 91 up.
Got it, okay, right, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay, so Denise, are you clear as to—
I think so. What I, what I can do is send this information back out to you. I'll write the categories that I have, and then you can confirm with me if I've gotten them accurately, okay, if I capture that information accurately.
Okay, so currently we have a, a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a—
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
This would be for the Attorney Espin. Can you explain what employees of businesses, where the businesses refuse to follow the CDC recommendations, what they should do?
So this is employees of what they should do?
Or, or, or someone who sees a restaurant that's refusing to follow this guidelines, whether it be a bar, occasion?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I'm not, it's kind of hidden in and out, can you say that again?
Can you explain, just to clarify for people, because I've been getting a lot of calls, I'm sure other people have too. If they go into an establishment, whether it be a bar, restaurant, or, or any kind of establishment, and the owner refuses to follow the CDC guidelines, what their recourse is?
Okay, so right now, we have in place executive orders. Executive orders are issued by the Governor. They're issued under the authority to enter orders during a state of emergency. And so under that section of the law that, that the Governor is utilizing, the executive orders are specifically supposed, or at least the authority to enforce the orders are through law enforcement officers. If you've heard— If you've heard the governor's news conferences and press conferences, he's explained that the possible penalties that could happen if you violate his orders. Law enforcement is, is assigned to enforce those executive orders. Now, if, if a business, though, does not follow CDC guidelines, if the business is not following what is recommended by the Department of Health, you know, the remedies, what could happen is if somebody gets sick because the restaurant has not followed guidelines, well, that business could be sued. They could be. They've not, they, they have a duty to their, to the public, they have a duty to others to follow certain guidelines and follow certain things. And if they breach that duty, if somebody breaches that, and that breach causes harm to somebody else, then they could be liable. There could be a situation where they could be sued. Within the framework, within the framework of employer-employee relationships, we have in Arizona, like many states, we have a workman's compensation system where if employees are, are sick on the job, if they, if, if, if the work conditions cause them injury, then there could be a form of compensation to them through workman's comp. Obviously, some businesses don't participate in workman's comp. It's a decision of whether you wish to pay into it or not. Also, some businesses are exempt from doing it. There's, it's very complicated, but for the most part, if a business pays into a workman's comp situation and the employee gets injured as a result of working conditions, then you get relief through the workman's compensation process. Additionally, I mean, on the horizon, what could go forward is there could be some kind of relief funds that are established. There's been talk in various different legislative assemblies to provide relief funds for people who are afflicted by this. To my knowledge, none, none of those have been passed yet. Those have just been in the kind of preliminary discussion stages. But right now, if, I mean presently, if, if an employee got injured because of the employer, because of the conditions created by the employer, it would be looked at as probably either a workman's compensation or some kind of potential lawsuit. Really, that's kind of the framework we currently have. It, it's difficult because this happened absolutely so fast. I mean, this kind of, this came into this, into the United States within the last two months, two to three months. So the, the current legal framework that we have, it's, it's not really equipped to fully address it immediately. It's going to take time to be able to fix it and address it and so forth. And so I think, I think legislatures are trying to address it, they're trying to deal with it, but it's going to take some time before it can be done.
Thank you. Would you recommend that, depending where you, where you reside, whether it be in one three cities or four cities, or the county, that if this happens, that they notify their local police department or county sheriff?
Yeah, I mean, here, here's a couple of things. I mean, we want to let, I, I firmly believe you want to let the market play itself. You know, you're going to see where some businesses, if they don't adapt to the consumer, they may hurt because of it. You see some businesses already who are implementing masks, they're implementing safety glass, they're implementing certain protocols and things, and you're going to see that some consumers are going to navigate towards that. And you're going to see some consumers are going to say, you know what, if this business isn't following certain protocols and procedures, then I don't want to do that. And you may naturally see some employees who say, you know what, I don't want to be with this business if that's the case, and so I'm going to try to look for another job, I'm going to try to go somewhere else. So hopefully, the market will, will play itself out, both for the employer, the employee, and the consumer. I'm, I'm hoping for that, and you're seeing a little bit of that going on. But now presently, if an employee is, is, is in a situation where they're not getting that, then I do, I think they ought to contact, they ought to contact law enforcement, or they ought to contact the, their, their state, their local officials, contact the mayor, contact the city council, work with the employer to, so, so the employer can say, you know what, things need to be changed and things need to be addressed. I recognize that that is hard for an employee. I'm in a, I, I think we're all in, we've all been in situations where it's difficult to go to your employer and say, you know what, I want some things changed, or I need some things changed. It's a difficult, difficult thing to do, but if, if they're in a situation where they're not safe and it's not healthy, then they ought to try to find relief, and it could be through the local law enforcement trying to enforce the executive orders, or it could be through legislative changes that the, trying to get the legislature to change that, or trying to work with, you know, things like the Better Business Bureau, work with the Chamber of Commerce, work with the mayor, the, the city councilman, to try to work with the business owner to say, hey, can you try to address these things? Can you fix these things so that your employees are safe?
Thank you.
Thank you. My last question is for Director Burley. The state has extended the testing blitz for another two weeks. Do you know if Mojave County will be included in that yet?
I do not yet. I anticipate learning that very quickly and probably getting a sense of that tomorrow when we have our ADHS meeting.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have, Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
Did we get any results from the HAVU testing?
We have not gotten results yet. I did reach out to them this morning, and they said they, those results would not be available until tomorrow.
Oh, till tomorrow? Okay. And with that, the final results from Bullhead, that was the, what you gave us last time, four, two from Bullhead and two from Kingman?
Sorry, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Okay.
So I believe we had only two cases from Bullhead City from the testing blitz. We had two pending tests last time, and if you all have that information in front of you, please correct me, but I believe we had two positive tests, and those pending ended up being negative. And those two positive tests were actually Kingman residents that had driven over to the testing event.
Right, right. And, and we spoke about the testing blitz in Laughlin. Did we get any from that, or would we know?
We would know in the spreadsheet, and I believe in that case, I think I counted, for the Bullhead City event, I counted five Laughlin residents.
Okay. Well, no, I'm, I'm actually talking about the testing they did in Laughlin where they were taking reservations for anybody.
Aye, sir.
So I know people, they were taking reservations from people from Mojave County, but if that came back positive, it would just be reported as positive and, and to the city or the place where that patient was from, right?
Correct. I mean, we, we should, that case should be assigned to us. So Mojave County would actually receive that case if it was a Mojave County resident testing in Laughlin.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Denise. Going on to?
Chairman?
Mr. Espin, did you have something?
Yeah, if, we're still on item one, correct?
Yes. Yes, we are.
If we haven't already, there's going to be a holiday on the 25th. And normally, we would have our, our, up these special meetings on the, on Mondays and Thursdays, but next Monday will be closed. And so I'm inquiring whether the board will be holding the special meeting on the next day, the 26th.
Okay. Any discussion? What's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to have our next meeting on the 26th rather than the 25th, which is a holiday?
And if I can also chime in on that, we can have the, we can have the regular update about the COVID-19 and so forth, but I'll, I'll tell the board that I have a very time-sensitive item that I need to have on the 26th. We have to make a decision on it by the 27th. I cannot bring it back on the 21st. So literally, the, I only have a window of opportunity of putting it on the 26th on that same agenda, so that you know that.
Okay. Okay. If there's no discussion, I'll.
Will that require a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll need a motion. So I'll make a motion that we change the meeting data, the 25th to the 26th.
Second motion.
Okay, a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, that takes care of item number one. Moving on to item number two. Discussion on possible action. Accept the list and ranking of the county manager candidates received from the selection committee to be interviewed by the board. Provide any additional candidates to HR that may have been selected by the board to be interviewed from individual supervisors. And direct staff to invite selected candidates to conduct a face-to-face interview or via video, if needed, with the board of supervisors during their May 28, 2020 special meeting. And where deemed appropriate, approve reimbursing candidates for travel and one-night lodging for the interview. Okay, I'll open this up for, for discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I had a name, a list of names to the clerk. I wasn't sure if that's how you were going to do it.
Yes.
But I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I think, I think that's the appropriate way, just to send the additional names, if you have any, to the clerk of the board. Madam Clerk, can you verify?
Chairman Bishop, after speaking with Mr. Cunningham, we kind of had gone over if we could get the list of names from the board submitted to either myself, or him, or both of us, so we could work together to get interviews scheduled, and then I also have to get those candidates noticed properly to follow the statutory mandated guideline there. I believe that the, the goal is to have the interviews on the 28th, since we do already technically have a special meeting scheduled for that day, unless the board decides to do a different procedure. So it's at your discretion, but that's kind of the easiest way to, to get from point A to point B.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
I would suggest that we change our time to, at least start at nine in the morning so that we can give the candidates a chance to figure out their schedule where they, they can do it. I, I would say that it would be better to do it by phone, but I'm not sure how many people we get, if we might want to set another date, you know, for two dates instead of one.
Madam Chair? And Supervisor Johnson, that, that is also a possibility, but until we have those names and can look at schedules and schedules for candidates, that's kind of why we picked a date, but obviously, we could always come back to the board at one of these meetings and, and request another date or times, et cetera.
And Madam Clerk, we also have a COVID meeting at noon on that same date. So we would convene at nine o'clock based on Supervisor Johnson's wishes, and then would recess out, do the COVID meeting, and then come back after lunch.
Madam Chair, that's correct. Or, you know, depending on what the board decides or scheduling-wise, we could also coordinate with Denise. She might want to, you know, if we're going to start at nine, she could do her update really quick if she wanted to. We, we can look at that schedule and modify it however fits best with the board's needs to, to get it all accomplished.
Okay. And we do need a motion on that?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
I don't know that we need a motion. We probably need to wait till, till the clerk and the finance, or the guard director come back with their positions set then.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Johnson, I, I do believe we at least need a motion to, to direct that names are sent and to proceed, as that's the way that the item's written, but I will defer to the attorney to make a decision on that.
This is Ryan Espin. I agree. I agree with the assessment of the clerk of the board that we should have a motion directing, directing the clerk of the board to gather the names of those who the board wishes to be interviewed, and then coordinate the interviews, the, the scheduling of the interviews for that May 28 date, starting at 9:00 AM.
Okay, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Chairman Bishop, I'd like to offer a thought to make this a little simpler.
Okay, I'll, I'll actually withdraw my motion then. You go right ahead.
If we were to do a roll call and to see if any supervisor would like to add any names to the list of applicants, at this point, that might be helpful for us to be able to put those meetings together.
I think that would be okay if we just had the number of applicants rather than the names, because they haven't been notified yet.
Madam Chair, just, just to confer, we do have members from HR here that are shaking their heads yes, that until they accept an interview, we normally don't put their names in the public until they are scheduled as, as a candidate that's interviewing and moving forward.
Okay. Then maybe if we knew how many, it would be helpful from each supervisor. Listen, my thought is if there's a supervisor that we have on our board that wants to interview five more people that are not on the list, we need to make provisions for that. So if we get a number close, then it's just logical to me that we pursue it in that direction. Just a thought.
Like how many names they're going to send in?
Exactly.
And I'm not particularly clear here either. So the committee has already submitted two, three names?
Three.
Three names?
Three.
Chairman Bishop, Attorney Espin, that's correct. However, out of the 40-some-odd candidates, the board is free to interview whomever they choose.
So, so it'll be the three, the, the, the three that the committee has submitted, and then in addition to that, any that the supervisors pick?
If that's what the board chooses, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Supervisor Watson, did you want to make that in the form of a motion, and then we can go to each supervisor after?
Chairman Bishop, I don't believe we need a motion to ask each, each supervisor how many names they will be submitting. We can just ask those one by one.
And then get the motion after the fact?
And then he can form a motion based on that input.
Based on that.
Okay. Supervisor Watson, you can take the lead on this, then.
Hey, I have no additional candidates that I would like to propose.
Supervisor Angus?
None for me.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're not using the COVID thing, we're zero to 18, 18 to 44?
Supervisor Johnson, we didn't hear you. Can you repeat that?
I have three.
Thank you.
Okay, three additional or three from the selection committee?
Three additional.
Okay. Supervisor Gold?
I have none at this time, but if I dream up one, I'd like to reserve the right to interview them.
I think, I think the clerk of the board will need the names so that they can set up the interviews, but for right now, I'll say zero for you. Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. And then I, I have two additional myself.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
Can I change mine? I, I do have one.
Okay, you're down for one additional besides what the selection?
I'm down for one.
Okay, so I, I believe if I counted correctly, that would be a total of six in addition to the three. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's possible, although some of the six may be, some of the supervisors may have the same person.
Right, because we don't, they could be the same. But at the same token, if we don't recognize in our motion at this point, we need to assume that those are six different applicants, correct?
Yeah.
So be my motion that we schedule a face-to-face interviews with the additional six and make provisions to have the time allotted possibly in two days.
Supervisor Johnson?
Is that face-to-face, or can it be, be a video or telephone?
I think the way the agenda's written, it's either or. Be a video if needed, it says.
Chairman Bishop and Supervisor Johnson, the members from HR signaling that they can be done either way, depending on where the person's located in availability. And also, to follow up on your motion, is the board open to us kind of giving some feedback to the days, maybe in a couple days? Just because we, you know, got to look at what the availability is, so we'll update you. you as that process goes, if that's okay with the board?
Allow staff time to schedule that at everyone's convenience. So that's the motion.
Okay, we do have a motion. I will second it.
Can I also just ask if you could add to that? There was a provision out there appropriating approved reimbursing candidates for travel and one-night lodging for the interview if necessary?
Correct. I forgot, I forgot to add that.
Thank you.
Can I second that, dear?
Reimbursement portion. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes, and that's all the business we have. So this meeting is adjourned.